Pursuant to Governor Baker's July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two revised order suspending certain provisions to the open meeting law. P L. December thirty-eight, section eighteen, meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee meeting will be conducted both in person and remote, for further note, in-person attendance limited to Berkshire Hills School Committee members, superintendent, district school administrators. Agenda items listed those recently anticipated by the chair, not all items listed in that be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by C T S B, School Committee Recorder, and other members of the public. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. We'll start with the minutes from January twelfth, and at this point, we have no one, no school committee member remotely, so all votes will be by voice, not by rule. So we have a January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. Do I have a motion approved? Second, any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor?
There's a, because it says twenty twenty-two, do we need to make that change?
A motion of amendment reflect the year twenty twenty-three.
Anything else? That's good, good opinion. All in favor? Opposed or abstained? So one extension by Bill Ford. Trusted report, Karen, that by twenty-three, December, I mean, it's a little more like.
Yes. So we're happy through the year on that. On the first page, it shows, seven, uh, where we are with anticipated remaining receipts. We're quite on budget with our revenue, as you can see, uh, for things like, moreover, on the interest on investments. It says, they go, they're actually higher there. It's backwards. Our Medicaid is coming in well. We should be over on that as well. Chapter seventy, we should come in the same. Chapter seventy-one, I expect will be over there. That doesn't normally come in until January or February, and then the last thing comes in June. Our expenses, we are right on track. We have a little, um, overage in our guidance and testing. We have another sack that's in there that will actually go to grants. And the legal settlement for special education is over. We anticipated that and will be backfilling that by moving expenses to, excuse me, moving expenses to our circuit breaker. The next page is, uh, shows you our cash positions and our liabilities. Revolving funds. And on our revolving funds, those are funds for new members where the balance carries from year to year. You see, the school lunch is in deficit, as it often is at this time of the year. We do move the, we charge our health insurance to the school lunch for the school lunch staff and then move that into the operating budget. We do the same with the director's salary, um, and so by the end of the year. And then we also are a month or two behind on receipts of our claims reimbursement, and that's just a process of the state going through that. So that, that is normal. Um, and then everything else is, is pretty standard. Circuit breaker. When we get the circuit breaker, that's about three quarters of the way down. We get it in one year and we expend it in the next year. So the balance that shows on seven-one of five hundred thirty-eight, six oh-two, we will expend that this year, and what we see in revenue this year will spend next year. So that's that five thirty-two. That's part of what we'll use for that legal settlement, um, moving over. There's nothing other that's spectacular here. Pretty standard. The next page are our grants. Our grants are all reimbursement-based. So we have to spend the money first and then we get it back. So when you see the negatives, that just means that we've expended the funds and are in the process of requesting reimbursement. B. Grab down under the state, they typically pay us closer to the end of the year.
What's that stand for? Berkshire County Regional Board?
It's called workforce now, Berkshire County, yeah. Same thing going down, the Great Bear and Community Impact Grant that we just received the first part of that, and then the last ten percent comes in at the end of the year. Same thing with the Project Connection, the Berkshire United Way, they pay us quarterly on that, and we'll have that by the end of the year. Questions to that? So it's in a, it's in a good position right now.
And sometime in the future, we will, we'll redo the explanation of all the grants and what.
It's actually in the budget.
As you said, Park, you don't give me about that, right?
Correct.
Go to the superintendent's report.
Okay, uh, so, uh, what I'd like to do is, is start with our roses or thorns, formerly called, uh, good news, uh, and challenges. Uh, and, um, let's, we'll start at the elementary school, Katie Ritzel's on, I'll have her say something. Kate, I'm gonna allow you to respond. I mean, I mean, I encourage you to talk.
Why, thank you.
So you can't talk.
I appreciate it. So, uh, I guess our thorn continues to be that we're still operating one secretary down. Um, we had, uh, thought we had a successful candidate, but it didn't work out in the end. Um, we're going out for a second round of interviews soon. We just have one applicant for our directed, uh, study supervisor, so we're gonna check in with that person and hopefully it'll be a match. Um, and, um, I am planning with Laura, as she mentioned last week, uh, plenty of, uh, activities for the Read Across America. And, um, I do want to mention, there's only one school committee member, uh, I won't mention her name, um, already signed up. But, uh, we, we hopefully can have some more.
Great, thank you. Um, Ben, you're here. So one thing we're gonna try to do in this space is, uh, when somebody speaks to come up to a seat, there's one in between Steve and Bill, so you're really close to the microphone. Uh, and in the next couple of months, we're gonna upgrade our system, so, um, there, the range is extended and there are additional microphones that tail off either, either side. So I'm working on that. What's up there, we say, there's supply chain issues. But probably better straight, so, Ben.
Thank you. Um, Anna and Sarah expressed their regrets they weren't able to get a ride, unfortunately. Seventh graders can't drive, our school committees. So I'm gonna represent the notes that we went over. Um, they're both in seventh grade and recently the seventh graders alerted, uh, through our crew program, the staff that there's a problem with bullying and meanness in, uh, our school. Surprise, surprise, we're a middle school in America. Um, and so we're continuing to work on that, but what's really neat about that is the seventh graders with their crew leaders, they're gonna survey all the students. That's a lot of details, so they're helping the crew leaders really organize some activities for the seventh grade students to talk about meanness and to really organize around bullying. Um, so their, uh, crew leaders brought in some videos they've been watching this week and leading discussions about it. And it really started to have an effect on kids just thinking about bullying in the school. Um, so it's really just a nice part of our crew, crew program that students can speak up and something happens to help them. Uh, we have a fifth and sixth grade Valentine's Day dance tomorrow at school, which is really exciting. And the seventh, eighth grade student council has been selling Valentine's Day, uh, funness. So kids, uh, purchase a dollar for a gift and send to, uh, a friend or a chosen person, uh, next week. Uh, and we had our second half of student led conferences, uh, yesterday. Uh, we had the snow, uh, cancellation two weeks ago, and that's been great, uh, where we used to have about forty to forty-five percent participation with parent teacher conferences. We now have about a ninety-eight percent participation rate where crew leaders reach out and for the fourteen or so groupies that they have, parents come in, families come in, guardians come in. Uh, for a few students whose families can't, we do it with, uh, another adults in the school. So it's just really an amazing experience where kids get to represent who they are and how they're growing, and we, uh, honor students, uh, of, you know, of all backgrounds. Um, and a lot of fun, uh, next Wednesday night, our eighth graders, uh, families are invited to the middle school to learn about proficiencies at the high school as they're making their choices about classes and what they wanna do, uh, for high school. So it's gonna be a really nice event hosting. And then a few weeks later, there's the open house at the high school where eighth graders learn all about the high school program and start choosing their classes. Thanks a lot.
Great.
And I asked you, crew bees?
Crew is our advisory program, and, uh, crew leaders lead the crew, and our students are in the crew or called groupies.
Do they know that?
Yes. Do they like it? I don't know. But they do know. It's another thing that, yeah.
The student like conferences, does that happen again at the end of the school year?
So what a great question. Uh, yes, we'd like them to happen. We have an agreement with the union, uh, for certain, uh, evening activities to happen about twice a year. So we do our big open house, uh, in the fall, and then we do our student led conferences. So we don't have the capacity yet to be able to do that, but what's really exciting, the governance team, so our instructional leads and our stu-, uh, social emotional learning leads, our team leaders, uh, are part of a governance team, and we've talked about what can we do in the spring this year to really bring this experience within the time we have in the school day. So we're looking, uh, maybe not to have, bring families in, we're saying we don't have that capacity, but we'll wait for students to kind of do a culminating event where they reflect back on that learning for the year. So we're definitely doing that this year. We'll start thinking about it next year. What does that look like if we could do this twice a year, uh, you know, and then fall and then the spring reflection? Totally wanna do that.
And it might be a thing as we rethink the half days to, to, is that what you were saying? Oh, to, is it, that, that may be a possibility.
Yeah, no, I think.
Great, okay. Uh, so the two of you speak loudly so it gets picked up.
Yeah. Um, uh, for our roses, um, I, I don't really think we have any thorns, but, um, there's, the freshmen are doing a Valentine's Day thing where you can just, like, send valentines to your friends and stuff, kind of like what the middle schoolers are doing. And, um, the sophomores are hosting a dance on Saturday, um, for this winter and Valentine's Day. And, um, in, at the end of March, there's going to be, like, a trip to Rhode Island for some students to go to, um, a conference, kind of talking about better in the school. I'm not really sure the exact details, but I'm going on it, so. And, um, there was a sob leaving today during the advisory. Uh, yeah, so, um, on Monday, me and a few other students will be headed to, um, South Avenue, I could be wrong. To a Western Mass, um, Student Advisory Board. Uh, your daughter's actually going.
Yeah, she is, yeah.
So we'll report back when I know what's going on. The girls' ski team, uh, we won county. Um, Key Club is selling sugar cookies to help support, um, they're selling sugar cookies. Um, I can't read my own. Yeah, it isn't so badly. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it. Oh, and the French exchange students came last week. I had the pleasure to have one. It was lovely, and we are all so excited to go in March.
Great. Uh, a couple of other things that, that Christie will add or would have added, and I'll add. Um, the other day, we had a half day, the same half day that Ben used and his school used for, uh, conferences, the high school used for uh, professional development, and Iona worked, uh, with a group of, um, I think, ten students, uh, also with, uh, Tristan Alston and, and Noelia Salinetti. And they presented stories, vignettes from their own experiences and other students around, um, um, uh, how marginalized or students on the margin can feel in school. Uh, it was in the library, uh, really meaningful and, and very valuable, and, and they did two rounds of these stories. Uh, and faculty instead had time to reflect on it, and then faculty and staff spent the rest of the day doing things. Uh, I think it's a, an incredible starting point, uh, and, and it's connected to Saab and the other work all the students are doing, but, but it'll be um, really interesting how, um, those voices lay a foundation for additional work for us to do.
Is Stoki still working with the district?
So, yes, so, Stowe was involved in it. They played a, a part in it. Uh, and then another guy from Collaborative for Educational Services, Albert Mossad. There were community partners there from Railroad Street, and inevitably, I'm missing somebody else who was there, but, but everybody came out and was, and I was lucky and blocked the whole afternoon and was there the whole time. And, and it was really well, well received. So some future meeting, uh, uh, will report deeply on, on what has happened since. Um, so that's good. The other thing is, uh, we, we write a lot of grants. Uh, we've got, uh, one that's public and one that's not quite public, so I'll tell you about the public one. Uh, and I'll hint about the non-public one, but sixty-four thousand dollars to support math professional development that we'll likely use over the summer. You know, we shifted to, uh, a new math curriculum, a lot sort of math, uh, K to twelve, so that'll support that work. And then the other one, uh, is, is a round supporting high school students in paid internships. Uh, so, um, so that's great as well, uh, also for sixty-four thousand dollars. Yeah, and then Sharon's got, uh, one from, uh, Food Services that, that is a rose.
Well, it's a rose and a one. I wanted to be, uh, a big kudo that I, we did include a number in your packet. It's, it's not specifically called, but out. Um, but what they've been doing this year is amazing. We have our fully staffed is ten and a half FTEs right now. We're at six full-time and one part-time, and that's it. Everyone is there, including the, uh, and then we also have our, our director. So, so far this year, they've served eighteen, actually through December, eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy-four breakfasts. The previous annual high is twenty-four thousand one hundred and eight. So we're already at eighteen thousand. We've served fifty-four thousand six hundred and three lunches. The, the highest we've ever been was sixty-three thousand in FY eleven. And again, that was with ten and a half staff members. So the average meals per labor hour for school service, we've talked about this before, is thirteen to fifteen. We're currently running at sixteen or higher. So that's the roses. I mean, they're doing an amazing job. The thorns is, oh, they're gonna burn out. We need more staff. So if you know anybody who's looking, this is not your mama's lunch lady. Now, they have to be trained now. They're, uh, serve state, choke allergy, uh, all of the CPR. They're, they're highly trained. So if you know anybody particularly who wants to be just working during the day, please send them our way because we have a fabulous staff, and I don't wanna lose them. I don't wanna burn them out, and really what they're doing is, is tremendous. And the other thing to, um, wanna give thanks to state because the universal meals program paying for that has really made a huge difference at all of our, so many more of our students are eating. See, at the high school, our, for example, our average has been about thirty-two percent. We're up to about forty-five to forty-six percent, um, which is some of the highest in, in the country. The average is in the third. It's more up than forty, so. And the elementary school is about sixty-five percent, and the middle school's about fifty-five. So our kids are, are eating, and, and it's really good. So I wanted to give a shout out to the.
Sharon, do we know if or when that piece will run out?
Well, uh, I believe that this year, it's supposed to run out in March, but I think that they're gonna find it at the Hattie Astro. And I know that they're already putting legislation forward, uh, to continue that in Massachusetts. So write to your, write to your delegation and, and encourage them because it makes a huge difference for our kids.
Uh, and, and the last several years were covered by the feds during COVID. And Massachusetts was one of a small number of states that realized it was important. So Massachusetts started covering it. There's potential work in Washington that thinks they're helping there right now to, to, uh, have the feds start doing it again. Great. All right. So what we're gonna move to, which is really the, the meat of our meeting tonight, is our fiscal year twenty-four budget presentation. And, and in a second, I'll pull it up, and I'm gonna work through, um, the first, almost half of the slides. And then we'll get into, um, some of the nitty gritty numbers, and, and Sharon, uh, will take over. Uh, this seems a, a series of PowerPoint or maybe something else, but a series of slides. And, uh, and then I'll make them available, um, in our packet on, on Monday and, and on our website, so that other people can look at it. Uh, I know there's some, um, select board members here tonight or online. I know there, uh, there's at least one town, uh, uh, manager and maybe administrator, uh, watching us all as well. Uh, we'll do this, uh, again for select board members, uh, next, uh, next Wednesday, and people can come here or, or participate remotely. So let me do just a sec to.
Do you have copies of the budget document?
Sharon does, and.
We made a choice, mom.
That, that is, that is the right choice. And then for, for other people, uh, if you wanna copy, you can reject us. It's also online or will be online, and it's in, uh, all libraries, because we like our libraries. I think it is. Is it in the library yet?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Probably tomorrow.
That's good, right? Okay, so, uh, let me start talking through these slides. Uh, if anybody's raising your hand while I'm talking through slides, it's sort of hard to see, see you in the. Um, so this is our mission statement. I, I say it again and again and again, uh, to ensure that all students are challenged through a wide range of experiences to become engaged, curious learners, and problem solvers who effectively communicate, respect diversity, and improve themselves in their community. Uh, often, I think, we're, we're actually meaning this. Uh, so our budget priorities are to continue to provide high-quality education for all students, uh, to provide a range of social emotional supports, and to ensure equitable access for all students. We're getting pretty focused on, on these, um, um, things that are going on now. Uh, lots of talk about regionalization with Southern Berkshire, the Regional School District Planning Board, uh, ongoing collaborations with Richmond, uh, and it's a time of year where we're, uh, starting to do contract negotiations. Our teachers are set for all, but, but we have to do it with some of our other groups, um, the paras and the, the cooperative. Uh, so, uh, let me talk a little bit about, um, e- each school from a personnel standpoint. Uh, often we make shifts in the elementary school around where students are tied to classes. So sometimes there's three sections on the grade. Sometimes there are four, not for a while, but occasionally we've had five sections on the grade, and, and we move things around. Uh, we're adding a, uh, recommending to add a, a directed study supervisor. That's a position that exists in, uh, high school and the middle school, uh, and that's to support, uh, students around uh, behavior, but also school climate and tone. Uh, and we're doing a lot of, of really deep, uh, professional development connected to, uh, literacy. There's been a big shift in how people are teaching reading these days, and then you stay around an education long enough, pendulum goes back and forth and back and forth, and, and a lot of people were focused on an approach at a teachers' college called Old Language, um, which was this notion that reading was a, a natural act, and if you got high-quality engaging materials in kids' hands, they could learn how to read. Um, but the other side of that, uh, continuum was, was really work on phonics and scientific, uh, aspects of reading, uh, the pendulum swinging back to the, the middle now, and, and, uh, the, the whole language stuff works really well for some kids, but doesn't work well for all kids. Some students need explicit support. So that's where we're, we're going with that. Uh, the middle school, uh, Ben's announces, uh, is, uh, they stepped away at the end of the year. Uh, so we're, we're in the middle of a search process for that. Um, something like, uh, thirty or so people, uh, parents, uh, staff and, and school committee members have reached out to me to be on that search committee. I'm, I'm narrowing that down, uh, and, and we'll share some draft questions and, and hope to set up some interviews right after the February break. Um, continued work in the, uh, four, uh, core teams, so English, science, um, math, and social studies, as well as our, our specials, uh, and lots of work around A C L, which is social emotional learning. That's, uh, which was important before the pandemic and is even more important, uh, post-pandemic. Um, at, at the high school, we're recommending a second, uh, PK to two certified teacher for our early childhood program. That program's called the Mountainside Program, and it's neat because it, it affords families some, some opportunities for support. It's also a, a teaching laboratory for our students who are interested in, uh, early childhood development, psychology, and, and potentially teaching. Um, with the second teacher, we anticipate expanding that program, uh, from, uh, to, to longer days and to five days. Uh, I think one of that program and, and Corey, were your kids in it?
Yeah, I think it was three, two or three days.
It was like three short days.
It was like drop them off and turn around.
And, uh, and, uh, sort of the way the world is and the way people have multiple commitments, offering a full program is better for families and the little ones, and it's actually also better for, uh, our students around their opportunities and, and schedules. So I'm really, I'm psyched about that. The other thing that I think's gonna be neat about this is, uh, as this and where the process of this becoming a chapter seventy-four program, uh, as it does, there are opportunities around tuition uh, that, that, uh, will make this self-sustaining, if not start to, to turn a profit. I mean, we don't talk profit and not profits, right? But potentially, uh, generate additional revenue. Um, an additional health teacher, um, and continued to work around, uh, uh, C D T E program and programming and staffing. Uh, last year, uh, you led us at the second assistant principal position. Keith Wright's done a couple of reports to this group, um, um, just in, uh, Innovative Pathways Grants. He's, he's covered his own salaries this year. So, uh, a great investment, lots of stuff going on there that we're really uh, excited about, and, and the state continues to be, um, really supportive. In a couple of weeks, we're hosting, uh, a state C D T E conference in this very room, which is, which is fun. Other, so, uh, half the down insurance, a nine percent total increase, um, uh, this year. And Sharon, I'll talk about it a little bit later. Uh, no premium holidays are yet approved for this. No premium holidays are yet approved for this year. And that's something that, that the Berkshire Health Group will visit sometime in the next. The medics rate changes in January of each year. There are no changes for twenty twenty three. And, and we have some obligations to the Berkshire County Retirement System. And that's gone up by four point oh two percent or a little less than forty thousand dollars. Educational services and tuition, an increase of five point six two percent, a hundred and five thousand dollars. Transportation, an increase of three point four three percent or eighty eight, one seventy nine. And athletics and co-curriculars, an increase of six point one four percent for eleven thousand and fifty dollars. The technology has got up a little bit, four point three seven for fourteen thousand five hundred. Facilities and operations, one point five four for eleven thousand. And other administrative costs, two point three two percent for an increase of eighty five hundred. Before, and we'll talk about this later in the finance committee, but we're in an inflationary cycle right now. So these particular increases in the context of seven percent inflation are, are in my mind reasonable. Except right now, set myself up for, for utilities. We're anticipating an increase of twenty one point two seven percent. Or a hundred and forty six thousand dollars, a hundred and forty six, four hundred dollars. Educated supplies, materials and equipment, fourteen point one three percent decrease. Sixty seven thousand two hundred and fifteen. And professional development, sixteen point four seven percent decrease, twenty six thousand eight hundred. That doesn't mean we're spending less on professional development. We're actually spending quite a bit more. But we're not spending more, we're spending less on professional development in our own budget. We're, we're spending more in grants, we're getting to do that. And legal and other insurances are going to have four point two nine percent or seven thousand five twenty four. So Sharon, so now I hand over to Sharon and she goes into the granular detail. And then when we're done with that, then we'll field as many questions as there are.
So we'll start actually macro before we go micro. The full budget this year is thirty three thousand five twenty one eight fifty eight. Thirty three million. I see that. Thirty three million, sorry, five hundred and twenty one thousand eight fifty eight. Or that's the proposed gross operating budget. That's an increase of one million eight hundred and twenty five thousand eight eighty one. Or a five point seven six percent. That's the gross operating budget all in. And to look at what Peter had talked about a little bit differently. The salaries, the category change is five point eight seven percent. And however, because salary is the largest part of our budget, the percent of total change of that one point eight million dollars. Is salaries at fifty six point three four percent or one million twenty eight thousand seven seventy two. Benefits that include, the benefits include insurance, all the insurances as well as. The, excuse me, Medicare tax, life insurance. Anything that would be covered under that benefits, that total increase is seven point seven five percent. And again, that's the second largest part of our budget and that is twenty eight point one five percent of the total change. Or five hundred and fourteen thousand nineteen dollars. And just to stay on benefits a little bit on the health insurance. Last year there was an eight percent increase. However, there was a premium holiday voted on at the same time. Which is why we only saw a two percent increase in the actual budget. This year the increase is one percent, but we have, because we're not going to have a premium holiday, we need to make sure that we're keeping up. With the rate increases, which is why you see the full nine percent this year. Utilities, as Peter said, is twenty one point two, two seven of the category change and eight percent of the total change. Educational services and tuition, the category change is five point six two or five point seven five percent. Of the total change. Most of that is due to out of district placements. I think we might have talked about this a little bit previously. I know we did in, in the finance subcommittee that. The OSD, the office that sets the tuition rates for private special education schools. Has a fourteen percent increase in their rates for twenty twenty four. Fortunately, because of the way we've been budgeting and keeping up with that and then. Also adding some of those costs to our circuit breaker, we were able to keep that down to a five percent. Transportation is three point four three percent or four point eight three percent of the total change. The transportation changes by the CPI, CPI was seven point two last year. We were able to keep this low because of the number of students as enrollment decreases. We have fewer kids riding and so we were able to cut a bus this year. So that's why we're able to keep the cost lower. Technology, four point three seven is, is less than a percent of, of the change. Activities. Activities and athletics, the category went up six point one four. Again, that's less than a percent. And that's mostly due to a ten thousand dollar increase in the athletic transportation. That increases to also to percentage of the CPI increase, but mostly because of the way we are in the.
Yeah.
The Pioneer Valley divisions. So we have to go further in the state. Facilities and operations, one point five four. That's again, under one percent of the total change. Other admin, two point three two is less than half a percent in the change. Legal and other insurance goes down. We were able to decrease the special education legal costs. Professional development, the category change is sixteen point four seven. About a one point five percent decrease of the total. And again, as Peter said, we're doing a lot of that through grants, educational supplies and materials. Decrease of that category at fourteen point one three. It's a little less than negative four percent change. And a number of, of quite a bit of that is also we have grants for a lot of new equipment. One of the other ways to look at the budget is by department. And we started doing this because we get a lot of questions. People look at the thirty three million dollars and say, but we only have. Five thousand dollars to spend on whatever it is they want to spend on. And they think that the district with a capital T and a capital D has millions of dollars. So I think it's important for us all to understand. That when you look at how the costs are allocated, the elementary school is about twenty percent of the budget. Middle school seventeen, high school about twenty seven, and then student services and ELL. About eleven, so seventy four point four four are directly in the schools or services to the students. That's staff benefits, supplies, materials. And then transportation is also see that little box, transportation includes service is also directly student facing. So four point six four. So when you look at that, seventy nine percent of our budget is student facing. It is directly related to education and student services. All other, that includes our non-public transportation. We have to provide transportation to resident students. Who attend the private schools in our district. That is just mandated by the state. Retiree health, health insurance contingency, which we put in there for the negotiations and school choice. School convenient administration is five point three eight. Facilities and maintenance is two point four six. And then this is, just shows in another way where the majority of our, our money goes. And that is to salaries and benefits and then to educational services, transportation. Those are the biggest pieces of, of the pie. We go back to the thirty three million dollar budget, five hundred and twenty one eight fifty eight. That's our gross, that should say gross operating budget. And our net operating budget is thirty one million four ninety six eight fifty eight. Our net operating budget is after we reduce by revenue from choice and tuition. What we do is we take the, we budget everything into the gross operating budget, that full thirty three million. And then we reallocate teacher costs to the choice and tuition revolving funds. Based on the percentage of students in each grade. So I do that at the end of the year. So I explained the first part and then the choice is leveled based on current projections and the tuition revenue is based. On current projections as well. Capital budget is good news. This is our final payment on the bonds for the elementary and middle school. The total of one million seven sixteen eight seventy five. And that's a decrease of nine point six percent in the capital budget. And the detail and breakdown and the assessment for each of the communities can be found in the budget book. Which will also be online. A quick look at the revenue. Where do we get our, our money from? As you can see, minimum local is about thirty percent. The additional local contribution that's above the minimum is forty seven. So seventy seven percent comes from our communities, which we very much appreciate and they've always been supportive. Chapter seventy is nine percent. E and D of the revenue is two percent. Choice and tuition is six. Chapter seventy one, which is our transportation reimbursement is two percent. And all other, all other revenue is four percent. That's Medicaid, interest. Miscellaneous rental kind of things. Excess and deficiency. So we have, we have in the packet. The history, we both have the certification letter and the history and it was certified at one million. One hundred and seventy one thousand six fifty nine or three point five three percent. Of the twenty three budget. Municipal, regional school districts are allowed to keep up to five percent. The value of five percent of the subsequent year. So our FY twenty two. We could have up to five percent of our FY twenty three. What was actually certified was three point five three percent. We're looking at six, I think that should be seventeen, used to offset the operating budget. Which represents fifty two point six six percent of the E and D balance. Our average use is about fifty point two six. Assessments, assessments are based on three considerations. Population allocation, that's percentage of students from each community. The minimum local contribution, that is determined by the state. And that's the least amount that a community should be spending for education in their community. And then the net assessment of the budget. Population allocation, Great Barrington went up slightly from last year. There are thirteen additional students. So they, as we know, have the largest percentage allocation of seventy four point four eight oh four. Stockbridge went down by four students. So they're at thirteen point one six four zero. And West Stockbridge went down three students. They are now at twelve point three five five seven percent of the assessment. The minimum local contribution, I would just have the law up there. That's, that's where it says that you have to. Equal an amount, not less than the sum of the minimum local. You can spend more, but you can't spend less. And we're going to look at this, last year's minimum locals and this year's. And these typically the minimum local comes from the governor's budget. Governor, when it's a sitting budget, has to have the budget, his or her budget out. Three weeks after the, the legislature sits as of January, after January first. If it's a new budget, if it's a new governor, they have until March first or second, depending on when. The full court sits to give his, his or her budget. So I expect that the governor's budget will come out March first. In the meantime, we were told to project. What the revenue would be and the minimum local contribution. It was getting into the weeds of the next week's spending. So the projection this year, again, this is what we had to calculate. For Great Barrington, minimum local was seven million nine hundred and ninety eight thousand eight hundred and sixty nine. Stockbridge is down slightly, one million four eighty eight, two thirty three. And West Stockbridge is up, one million three hundred and sixty nine thousand three eighty two. Given the projected minimum local contribution and the addition above that. The projected net assessments for Great Barrington would be nineteen million nine thirty nine four eighty nine. For Stockbridge would be an increase of about ninety seven thousand to three million five ninety eight, six seventy two. And an increase of what, to West Stockbridge. And that would be three million three hundred and fifty thousand one seventy nine. The next slide, we'll see where the change is. So the total assessment is six point five million or a change of one million six hundred and seventy seven thousand six thirty eight. Change to Great Barrington is a five point, a seven point five eight percent increase. Or one million four hundred and thirty six thousand seven sixteen increase. Stockbridge is two point three eight for eighty five million five eighty nine. And West Stockbridge increases just under five percent at four point seven five or one hundred and fifty five thousand three twenty six. Again, those are based on the projections that we made. What questions do we have?
So let me stop Sharon again.
So the finance subcommittee met earlier this evening. And originally we had said we were going to vote what would be next week, February sixteen. There is no reason to write this vote and with the governor's budget coming out beginning of March. We're proposing that we would vote March ninth, which was our backup date anyways to vote. There just, there's no reason to vote. There probably won't be any changes, but just makes sense to, there could be some.
Next week's our formal budget public hearing.
Next week's a formal.
See, he's out of your field.
A quick specific question. The decrease in the supplies budget, and some of that is because of grants overall. Or are you, are you proposing to spend the same or less than last year?
It's more or less. There were, there were some items in there that. This year we were able to, to move to a ground. So it will be about the same.
And, and some of the supply stuff was also. Well, math curriculum.
Well, math curriculum, it's largely, it's not a, fair to say a one time expense, but a, a one time bigger expense, right, and then smaller over time. And then uh some of our other expenses that we're not spending as much on now are, are masks and PPE and, and all. Though some of that was actually also covered by other, other grants.
Any other questions or for spoken, any members, comments, suggestions? Now is the night to start to talk about any changes or concerns you have?
Um, but also, I mean, there's several new school community members, there are students here not been through this before. Uh, I think we have a really strong finance committee, and we start this work in August, and we're in a good routine uh around it, but i- if something doesn't, there's a lot of jargon in this stuff. Uh, if something doesn't make sense, uh, uh, feel, really feel free to ask. And if, if you really want to get into the weeds, it's Sharon or Peter would be happy to do so.
In the weeds.
I don't see any news.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I think it's, we worked really hard as a finance subcommittee, we worked really hard uh with the administrators, uh, Rich will probably summarize this at the tail end of the meeting, the finance committee. But Sharon and I got our reading glasses and printed out dozens of pages of spreadsheets and went line by line several times to sort of really sharpening our pencils and, and trying to, to reduce where possible things that would have the least impact on students. The, the health position at the high school, I think, is really an, an essential one and long overdue. Actually, uh, out of compliance with the state for, uh, for quite a long time, right? And, and that's something that's been supported by various ad hoc groups and, and community based committees. Uh, and then the town of Great Barrington has been really generous and supported some of that.
I was just wondering if there's ever been discussion about an additional band teacher at all from middle and high school?
Well, that did not come up during any of the finance meetings. Yeah. It just didn't come up.
Yeah. All right, there's one question in the audience, should, should Claire, go ahead.
Hi, it's actually Erica Milky at Sheila Clary's house, Erica Milky, uh, in Houston. Um, I was curious if Sharon could just go over for new members and a refresher to me about that excess and deficiencies amount? The best explanation I could remember that it's kind of like a, like a slush fund sort of a thing that we can draw on to cover overages, but I would love a more clear example of that. And I also had another question, which was, um, Corey had asked about, um, the Stoke Collaborative. And I was curious if we are currently still paying the Stoke Collective and if they are factored into the twenty twenty four budget?
Yeah, so let, let me address the Stoke thing first, and then Sharon talk about uh, uh, free cash. But, or E and D, which in the town context would be called free cash, but in no context should ever be called a slush fund. Um, so the Stoke Collective, uh, we've, we've used grant funds to support their work with us, and we're coming to uh the end of a cycle. So we're finishing up that work this year. Then the intention is that, that we do some more work on our own. And they come back in a couple of years out to check in on that work. So there's a lot of stuff, I mean, it's, it's, I often use this analogy, but it's like painting a bridge. And when you get to one side of the bridge, uh, the other side of the bridge is starting to rust and you need to, to, to get to the other side. But there's not, there's not explicit funding to work with them additionally next year. But that's intentional because it's the end of a cycle. And it's likely in, in two or three years that we would put in additional funding uh to, to work with them. We also have uh access to, to grant funds and, and a, a strong expectation that, that we'll use internal and other external resources to do uh continuing uh diversity, equity, inclusion, uh, and belonging work going forward. Uh, Sharon can talk to the, the E and D a little.
As Peter said, our excess and deficiency is like free cash in a town. And I think for a lot of people, the easiest way to understand is retained earnings in a business. So if your revenue is over, if your actual revenue is over your projected revenue and your, and or your expenses are under expended, so there's additional money. Either more money coming in or less money going out at the end of the year. You file with the Department of Revenue and whatever's remaining from your budget is called, is excess and deficiency. A regional school district is allowed to keep the fund at no more than five percent. Each year, the school committee, except for one year since I've been here, the school committee uses that money, must vote as part of the budget cycle to use that money to offset the assessment. It's possible to use it at other times of the year only by a vote of the school committee and either approval or non-action by the towns. So it's not an, it's not um additional money that we could use during the year for anything we want. It must be specifically identified and voted on by the school committee. The towns must be notified. And again, should we need to use it during the year, typically during the year would be for unanticipated expenses. Say if there were some really high cost special education um students that we hadn't budgeted and didn't have circuit breaker for, that's what that money really is for. It's also important that, and we've talked about this before, that when we go out to borrow, credit agencies look at that. Uh, they look at it in the retained earnings to show the fiscal strength of the district.
Uh, one other thing I'll mention, and this happened, I think, a year ago. Uh, if we ever go over the five percent, then uh we have an obligation to give those additional resources uh back to the towns. So uh we did that to your spell.
To your spell. I think that, that was part of the COVID, the whole COVID. And that gets returned to the town in the same proportion as the assessment.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much, especially as an accountant, that retained earnings comparison really helps. And I promise I will never call it a shop slash fund again, ever.
Okay, thanks, sorry, sorry.
Would it be important if I just gave the finance committee report now to see what's up? Um, so we met um just prior to this meeting and just kind of front ran everything that's already been presented to you. Um, a lot of the discussion focused on the assessment to Great Barrington, which is obviously over seven percent, which is um you know, not less than ideal. And you know, how, how, if anything, we addressed it, obviously, the assessments to the other two towns are, 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 you know, well within, frankly below what has been norms in the past few years. Um, and um, Bill, our new member, was the first to point out correctly is that, you know, in, in this inflationary climate right now, uh, uh, five point seven percent increase in the net operating budget is really, really good, and really, really tight. That seven percent number results from just anomalies of the population shift and, and the net assessment and all these crazy math that there's nothing we can do anything about. Uh, and you know, we had a conversation about whether we should look to try to find ways to address the decrease, the total assessment, really for the sole purposes of decreasing the assessment under Barrington. Um, and you know, going through an exercise many of us have done before, is looking at line item cuts or having the administration propose line item cuts was discussed. Uh, E and D was discussed. Uh, but in fairness, I will say that, you know, the budget of the administration came with a very high recommendation already, which is comparable to what we did last year. So that's kind of where we left off, but um, there was no and we all, the finance committee at least, gone through all the line items, you know, over the last four or five months. But there was, that was the one concern, why is the assessment of Great Barrington? Did I summarize that?
No, I think that's correct. Anyone else before we move on? Once again, thank you, the administration.
Yeah, and thanks to the finance subcommittee for their, their good work.
Go ahead. So I want to make sure I'm reading this right, as far as E and D, so la- last year's budget was nine hundred twenty eight thousand, this year's six hundred and seventeen?
The, the difference is what we had put in for capital.
Okay.
Last year, and we're not having that same request on the capital.
Okay, so with the six hundred and seventeen, how much is going to be left in the E and D roughly?
Well, about five hundred sixty.
Five hundred sixty thousand.
Unfortunately, this is certainly the finance subcommittee, which normally Rich and I would look for a little bit more E and D, but we're probably at a level, we don't want to go lower, at least in our minds.
And, and in the. If you make a point, that was kind of, that's where we were tracking the finance committee, but.
And, and in the past, we had often known that there'd be a, a health insurance premium holiday or something that would replenish E and D. And, and we're, we're not either anticipating or aware of that happening, right? So it's, it's one thing to commit to take more out of E and D when you know the, the bucket's going to get filled up again. It's another thing to take more out when, uh, when it may not get filled up again anytime soon.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I'm not seeing anyone, so you can go on with your superintendent.
Yeah, so uh, let me work through a couple of things. Uh, at the, at the last meeting, uh, we've talked about uh, both a waiver for tennis and um and, and potential additions to um middle school activities. So I added uh both of those plus a little report on, on co-ops. So the one I think I'll talk through first is this, this chart on co-ops, right? So people are wondering about that and, and where we are and, and what's going on. The only other ones for potential waivers might be uh boys and girls across country. Uh, we, we applied for tennis and that was locally approved, but we're waiting to hear back from MIA. But our, our understanding is if it's locally approved, it will likely be approved at the, at the MIA level.
Was that boys and girls?
Uh, yeah, surprising for both, because we, we were under the um assumption that, that boys would certainly get approved, but girls might not, but both were approved at the level.
Excellent.
Yeah, just good. So that's, that's one, any questions on that? Uh, Ben sent me a memo about.
Just to point out, so I know we talked about maybe a future date for voting on the fall sports, but that was in my mind, and I think, and I resonate continued on formalizing procedures for the future votes.
Right, very clearly we have to do, and it's my understanding, the, the co-curricular expert, whatever, that whole group is, is meeting next week. Uh, and, and then we'll, we'll circle back on this. I just wanted, I felt there was some sense that we weren't particularly responsive, so I rallied the troops to get.
No, this is awesome.
A lot of information. So no action to take, it, it's more to sharing it. Uh, there's also a memo about some potential things that we might do at, at the middle school level that's been put together, uh, which again, it's not a decision point or an action point tonight. It's just for, information for future, future conversation. Um, so uh, those are good. The next thing is a, a request to approve uh a donation from Sheffield Pottery, and this is sort of cool. Uh, they would like to give us a, a four brand Model C wheels with splash pans valued at six ha- six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, I think we're really, are you a potter?
I, I'm in the arts program, and the wheel that I'm using right now is so finicky, it's, it's horrible, it's not great, so.
Yeah, so, and I think, like, I strongly recommend we, we thank Sheffield.
I was going to approve the, the.
A motion by Rich, second by Phil, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you for the motion, uh, obviously, I'm very.
Thank you.
Really generous.
Yeah, so the next one, and maybe I missed something. Oh, it's out of order. Yes, not out of order, but out, out of. So, maybe you don't need all four, you could. The next one I'd like to bring up is, is the proposed school calendars. Uh, so every year I come before you to, to get your approval for the school calendar, uh, so I, I can publish it. This one largely is, is similar as it has been in the past. And let me just sort of highlight a couple of things. The, the calendar proposes that we start on Monday, the twenty eighth, with staff for two days, right? So two professional development days. And then students start on, on Wednesday, the thirtieth. And that's sort of contractually appropriate within the teacher's contract. What's elegant about this is the first week for students are in school for three weeks, then, or three days. Then, then the next week is Labor Day, so students are in school for four days. And then by the third week, students are in school uh for five days. So that's the way I like to start school, uh, it, it's a, it's a thoughtful transition. Um, we maintain the, the half days and, and the PD days. A, a lot of the other things are tied to um uh state and federal holidays that, that, that we don't control. Um, the one shift in this is, is we used to have a Friday in, in April. And in this calendar, we're not holding that. Uh, if, if a staff person or a student wanted to take a religious holiday, they just take a, a religious holiday.
Someone, second?
So a motion and a second discussion.
So what you're saying is all the holidays on the calendar now are just the legal holidays, except for by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, no more, no less?
You actually, it's what you are saying, not what I'm saying. I don't think that's inaccurate. I, I, I think, I, I can't definitively say that, Rich, I, I think it's uh, I, I think what you're saying is right, but I need to, to uh check that to, to confirm that that's right.
The one, the one would be the day after Thanksgiving, which is traditionally a day off, but I don't think that's any legal holiday. The twenty fourth.
Correct, correct. So that's not a legal holiday, but we've, we've historically held that as a, as a holiday.
Religious absences are considered uh excused or religious holidays are.
Considered as excused.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
I have.
The poll's your decision.
Yes, thank you. Uh, there are potentially some implications for some of the bargaining groups on this. Uh, and, and I'll follow up with the negotiation team on, on uh what we want to do. Because it could be written into their contract, that's a holiday, so then we just give them another holiday. So we got all of those. So a quick update on the regional school district planning board. Uh, many of the people in this room were involved in it, uh, Steve is, Bill is, uh, Sarah is. And me. and me, uh and Sharon occasionally too. Uh, they're working through the uh draft regional agreement. Um, they're looking at um uh finance stuff and whether majorities or super majorities are warranted for which kind of decisions. Um, there's an education outreach group, there's a finance subcommittee, uh there's the, the group is a and there's an education, there's an outreach group, there's a finance subcommittee, and then there's the whole group. Uh, and they, they meet a lot um and, and are making uh some progress. Um, there, there's another round in March, and this is starting to get confusing even for me. But our district is holding corporate graduate meetings. We held foreign person, there's a fifth one that's going to be for Spanish speakers coming up. Then there's a virtual one for people who were unable to go to an in-person one. And then in addition, there's a survey that people can participate in. In addition to our own stuff, the regional school district planning board, uh it has had a couple convenings to get public input. And then separately, this was reported in the press, Southern Berkshire recently held uh a, a meeting to, to talk amongst themselves about it. Um, so the work continues, I'll share um updates um as I have them. Um, the MSBA process, Steve submitted his uh capital maintenance plan. So, and sort of like what we've done in the past to try to get the two percent incentive around that. And that was very thorough and thoughtful, so thank you, Steve, for doing that. Uh, we're waiting to hear back from the MSBA in terms of their enrollment letter. And at this time, it appears that they're considering enrollment for both a, a three-town high school and potentially an eight-town high school. But, but we'll see that when we get the enrollment letter, and that's a big deal, so I'll, I'll circle back to you on that.
What's the next action item for this committee on that, votes or things we have to authorize?
At, well, it's interesting, so I, 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 I think the next one is in, by April twen- April twenty-seventh or thereabouts. Um, we have to uh uh vote on a, on a feasibility agreement to move forward. Right, so, and it's February, right, so it's not, it's not that far away. Uh, I, I think the ball's in their court now to get us the enrollment letter, to get us the response on the feasibility letter. We already did the town votes going into this process, we don't have to do that, so um, uh, thi- this committee to, to respond to those as well as the building committee. Uh, and then sooner than later, I'd like to form uh the parallel outreach committee, which isn't uh mandated by statute, but, but should be by common sense. Uh, and, and we start, start talking to our neighbors.
And and enrollment is rather interesting, and if you listen to the argument what Peter made. I, I think the state really considering all the concerns that we had about the, the original number they gave plus the difference during the three-town and the eight-town. So I think that taking their time has been good for us.
Yeah.
I think they're really considering it.
Um, so that's all, that's all I have.
Subcommittee policy is not met, Jason, buildings and grounds?
Not met.
Superintendent's evaluation?
That's a bad, what we're trying to
Finance, we've already had negotiations, we will be starting to set up dates, we're a little behind the eight ball, but uh for the two groups, we'll, we'll have to maybe uh figure something out, how to do this a little quicker or a little more condensed, because we are a little bit behind on that. Personnel.
Nothing particularly dramatic, and would, would, and remind you, man, I'm happy to share it again, I've shared it before. Uh, Tom Kelly's been our project connection director for uh thirteen years or twelve and a half years uh since we got the first grant, and he's stepping away and, and he's done really good work uh around uh building community relations and, and relations with the state and supporting uh young people. And that program's really a lifeline uh for a lot of people, so uh I am happy to, again, to recognize its impact on it and uh celebrate, and we'll, we'll, we'll get a cake and run over.
Before we hire the moment.
One thing we were doing at some point, I think it fell off, was having a running list of open positions that were being hired, and that was at the bottom of this.
Yes.
And that would be super helpful, I think, to reinstate.
Yeah, happy to do that, and I'm sorry that, that, that fell off. Um, off the top of my head, we're uh, we're starting interviews for the middle school principal. Uh, uh, and then we have a, a special education vacancy at the high school. Uh, we, we are, Sharon indicated earlier, perpetually understaffed in food services. Uh, we have a, a custodial vacancy.
Alimentary secretary.
And an alimentary secretary. Um, and, and another one that, that uh is often hard to fill are, are paraprofessional positions.
Karen, FY twenty-three, the second quarter transfer, it says E and D, but
Uh, the transfer report is, is uh pretty usual. We, we did sixteen transfers in the second quarter, thirteen or eighty-nine percent were for general operating needs. Mostly, you know, if there was a change in supplies for music or equipment, music, a lot of, a lot of it has to do with music, techs. A lot of it's at the middle school. I really have to, have to say, the middle school, Julie and Ben, like, are just laser focused on on what they're spending and making sure that they transfer the money before they do their expenditures. So that's wonderful. We, additional hardware. Principal supplies, and that tends to be things like postage or office supplies. Library supplies, and then at the high school, we needed to get new course uniforms. We have an account for that, but we didn't fund it for this year, we hadn't anticipated, so they moved money to cover that. The other three are the ones that I typically do in the first half of the year to account for reassignments, uh new hires. And then, once that's done, I balance the salary accounts. There'll be another balancing of salary accounts this quarter, that's sort of ongoing. And then um the final one, again, was salary, and then closing out some of the, or balancing the insurance accounts. If there are, uh, if we had additional funds in there, have to pay.
There are multiple, please. Motion for a second. A motion by Rich, second by Bill, any discussion, questions, concerns? Very none, all in favor? Opposed or abstained? You asked, thank you, Sharon.
It's fun to not have to do the roll call.
Any old or new business before the committee? Any public comment? But we will not post it as being for
Yeah, we can't do it in a hospital, we have to
I, we have issues with sound in this little room, and that room is
Just as long as those posting everything reflects that people can come here.
Yes, yeah, I'll, I'll make a note of that.
I, I absolutely think for our further meetings, we should post it as a whole without this room to people.
Yeah.
It may go back to bite us because of the size, but that's fine.
Well, I, I think so, and then I want to look if, if there's a way we can use a big, maybe we need a um to sit tighter with each other. And then um have a microphone for public comment.
What about this lighting through downstairs?
Again, the technologies up here, that's a problem.
They've got technology too.
They, they have technology.
They have a big screen and, and good sound, I think, pretty good sound. I mean, I think this room actually could be reconfigured so that you could put ten chairs on, on that end with the tables down a little bit, because let's face it, for those of us who pre-go in, we got ten people at a meeting, we would be thrilled.
I mean, you could, you could use the tables up here for us, well, we can figure it out. I, I think it's important that the public knows that they can come in person.
But, uh, that being said, I'd also like to appreciate the fifteen uh attendees that, that are here virtually. Uh, there aren't a lot of meetings in person where we ever had fifteen uh additional people. Um, and I'm trying to be really good about sending a reminder to all two thousand people on our email list e- every Monday or, or Tuesday uh before the meeting.
Now, there are, there are many, many meetings where if we didn't have a staff back, we wouldn't have had any one other that's what we remember. Superintendent, this is an administrative, it is important to continue the technology, but it's also important to welcome people back.
Yeah.
So can I just say one more thing?
Of course.
On the eight towns group, I think it's really important that everybody who's uh has an interest in where we're going with education in the South Berkshire County, go on the eight towns dot org website and look at all the work that's gotten done. I'm surprised, just talking to people, how few people know what's actually happening. And we're all going to be voting on this, there should be a lot of conversation going on, because it's really, really important.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's this funny tension where you, you could spend days reading all the reports and materials on that site. Uh, but lots of people want things boiled down. But if you only read the boiled down thing, it could be hard to make a uninformed decision, so and I think the last that we're talking about it was not having uh it voted on it at a regular town meeting, but perhaps as special town meetings in September. Uh, and I think that you're right, like, that group has to do a lot of outreach and, and share a lot of information.
And the next outreach meeting is uh nineteenth, I think, uh Saturday, the nineteenth. At uh, at the Great Barrington Senior Center, I think, nine o'clock in the morning. It runs for three hours, it's like the one that was in Sheffield about three weeks ago. Had about twenty-five people, and it was a good, open exchange of questions and issues. I'm sure this one will be the same, would be worthwhile. The last of the eight town groups, but probably Peter doesn't want me to mention, is it's an inordinate amount of time that we spend in on this, which is good. But it's really, it's really difficult, it's really difficult. I, I, you know, I think Peter probably spent about twelve to fifteen hours a week.
Yeah, it's hard.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's taken a lot, and we're winding down, we're gonna have a vote in, in the fall. But it really is taxing, and the administration, Sharon, has been nice enough to go to the finance to represent us at those meetings, but it's a lot of work. Okay, by E and D's consent, we're